I forgot. I thought it was next. Click it.
Hmm? I like this one. Thank you. I had that draw. You were me. What are you guys doing here, playing with season or what?
Launching. Oh, okay. Gotcha.
I'm sure no one's ordered our things here. I think we're all here. Councilmember Cantino, you do an invocation?
You're doing invocation. Here.
Rock and roll.
Yep. Dave, click it.
All right, welcome everyone to the Town Council meeting here on the beautiful 18th February in the most wonderful town in the world, Fountain Hills. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for invocation from Councilmember Cantino.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight for this time that we could come together and meet and share, and we hope that you will bless us, guide us, and protect us, and we'll sure and give you the praise. Amen. Amen. Thank you very much.
Roll call, please, Beth.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Schlum.
Here.
Councilmember Leger.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Shambow.
Here. All right, thank you. First item tonight, we're going to go over some upcoming community events, and they're on the PowerPoint overhead there. First, want to thank everyone that has been supporting our local businesses, service organizations, restaurants, retail, and service companies that makes a big difference here. Last week, or was it this week? Last week, we went, as council went and attended and supported our neighbors at the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation in attending their tribal council inauguration last week. They re-elected their vice president, council member, and secretary, and we were able to celebrate with a several hundred largely Native American folks there and, of course, our neighbors. So, we were pleased to be there, and they put on a tremendous inauguration there. So, I want you to know, we've been there, we're there to support our neighbors, and it was a great event, and we thank them for inviting the Town Council. Of course, every Thursday, we have our Art and Farmers, Now With Farmers Market downtown here on Avenue of the Fountains. So, please, if you haven't gotten down there already, check it out. Some great local artists from Fountain Hills and our surrounding community, including Fort McDowell down there, and now we've got some Farmers Market, so you can get some sustenance while you're shopping. On Saturday, we'll have a guided hike with a focus of animal and plants, I understand, over at the Golden Eagle Trailhead, Saturday morning at 8:00 a.m. McDowell Mountain Regional Park has a lot of things going on, and I just did a snippet of a few items to highlight that might appeal to several folks. Again, also on Saturday, but in the afternoon, the 20th, they have reptile feeding out there right at the McDowell Mountain Regional Park. If you haven't been out there, it's a great amenity to our community. What's that? Did I misspeak?
Uh-uh.
Did I say council feeding or something? Okay. Reptile feeding. I do not know how large these reptiles are, so watch your small children. McDowell Mountain Regional Park, if you have not been out there, is contiguous with our northern border in Fountain Hills, so just take Fountain Hills Boulevard out as you're heading towards Rio Verde, and it's just a great place out there. It's roughly, I think, the size of Fountain Hills, so it's a great place. We have, of course, the Great Fair coming, so I'm sure everybody's aware of that. The following weekend, starting on Friday, right in downtown Fountain Hills. And then another item from the McDowell Mountain Regional Park I hope to get to myself is the, they're calling the Full Snow Moon Hike, so a evening hike with a full moon called the Snow Moon. I can't remember why. I'm sure there's a good reason. And there will not be, not be snow on the ground out there at McDowell Mountain Regional Park that evening, so I think that sounds fun. And then we have the Memorial Disc Golf Tournament. We just wrapped up another disc golf tournament at Fountain Park, and now this is the big one, coming March 3rd through 6th. Fountain Hills High School Basketball is still participating in, at least the girls are, in the state tournament, and they play Saturday if you are willing to drive out to Safford. They play out in Safford, but you can check out that website to follow up with them, to see how they're doing. Of course, we had a great accomplishment. Jacob Vought won the state tournament in his weight class for wrestling at the state just recently, as reported in the Fountain Hills Times and Facebook and a variety of different places I heard about that, so it was most exciting. But those are upcoming community events, and encourage you to get out and enjoy some of them. There are so many more, many of them on our website, many on the Chamber website, McDowell Mountain Regional Park and other organizations throughout our town. So, lots to do in our town, particularly this time of the year. At this time, I will start with our State of the Town presentation. Thanks, Brian. I believe our president's address was an hour and 27 minutes, and I will keep it just under that. Actually, this will be quite brief, but I thought we'd utilize our technology here at Town Hall. Of course, now we have our cameras, and the presentations are easy to put onto Channel 11, so it can be viewed on Channel 11 and also online, so this will be available for more folks to see now that we have this technology here in our town. And I've got the clicker, hopefully it'll work here. Well, first, wanted to welcome everybody. Our agenda following this presentation is quite light, so we'll keep this brief, and if you'd wish to stay for the remainder of the meeting, I encourage you to do so, as we'll all get out of here fairly early this evening. But welcome to the Town Council chambers. For many of those that may not have been here before, thanks for coming here in the audience tonight, and I welcome you. We'll start with our brief overview of the state of the town, and of course, this is from my perspective. Tonight, we outlines a little welcoming ingredient, recognize now our Town Council, our staff, the volunteers here in our community, those watching on television, the citizens, neighbors, and visitors here in Fountain Hills. Welcome all of you, Town Council in particular. Thank you for doing such a great job, working hard together, supporting the town with the passion and love you have for it. Every time you face a challenge, you do your best, and that's most appreciated. I'll be going over the economy, as no big surprise, the condition of our town, some recent accomplishments over the last year or so, and some opportunities and invitation for those in the community. That'll be kind of the highlight and the key of this presentation. All right, the economy. Enough already. Turn the economy back on. That's what I say. Arizona is not really accustomed to this type of economy. As long as I've lived here since I was 11 years old, the economy of Arizona has always been booming, not just construction, but other industries in Arizona have been booming. Of course, this has been a worldwide slowdown in the economy, and we've had dramatic effects here in our state, in our region, and also, of course, here in Fountain Hills. Many families have been affected, and I'll talk more about that in a little while. Construction activity here in our town has been virtually nil, at a standstill for the most part, throughout 2009 and into 2010. We don't expect that to increase to any great extent. We've budgeted for that outcome as well. 2011 and '12, we may see some marked improvement in that area. We have seen remodeling and improvements that people are making to their individual homes, but generally not a large number of permits. That's also something that we have been relying upon financially in our community. Sales taxes from construction as well as permit fees have been a substantial gap in our revenue stream for our community to sustain itself. Businesses are beginning to show some sign of recovery, largely unscientific, but some signs are showing that throughout the state, some things are increasing as far as the sales tax revenues. So, that's a good sign, but cautiously optimistic is our approach to the economy, particularly here in Fountain Hills. Fortunately, we're not reliant on large car dealerships and other things that have impacted other communities surrounding us or adjacent to us. We have a retail mix that largely, you know, if you look at the grocery stores and Targets and other similar businesses, those seem to, you still seem to buy groceries and support those, so we're not as dramatically impacted by slowdowns in retail activity, fortunately. Again, thank you, as I mentioned, in our upcoming community events. It makes a huge difference to have the local community, the residents, our visitors, support our local businesses. Obviously, they're terrific businesses, unique businesses, and quite a variety of them for folks to enjoy, but it takes some thought sometimes to get out of maybe driving over the hill and to really make an impact in your community. It's important that we support our local businesses here in Fountain Hills. Of course, we, as a town, the budget is already in full swing, and we keep an eye on our state of Arizona and the legislature and the state budget, because there are items that happen in that body that can affect our community as well. You've heard of sweeps of funds and those types of things. If they have to go much deeper, they're going to continue to impact our community and our town. So, we keep a close eye on there. We have good representation and dialogue with our local electeds for our districts, and that's appreciated, but they do have a challenge at the state, so obviously, there be impacts in our community. And looking back at 2009, it's similar, a question was asked to me from the Arizona Republic, what do I feel has been the biggest impact to, their question was the Northeast Valley, of course. For me, it's Fountain Hills. I feel the top story of this last year in Fountain Hills is the impact of the economy and the decline. The hardship has affected all levels of our communities, residents, businesses, local government, and even nonprofit civic organizations. But along with that hardship comes compassion, and when times are tough, our residents here in Fountain Hills continue to recognize greater needs of others, even those beyond our valley. In 2009, donations from Fountain Hills to the hardship-stricken citizens of El Salvador, the country of El Salvador, was overwhelming, so much so that they were inclined to send the comparable, comparable to their secretary of state to our small-town Fountain Hills to begin part of the year. Marisol Arguita de Berias, the Minister of Foreign Affairs from El Salvador, visited Fountain Hills, visited the Sister Cities organization of which we have the Sister City in a taco that has gained some good support from our Chamber and from our community directly, and other organizations in the medical field, with a large number of Fountain Hills folks participating, have donated millions of dollars in services or, and dollars themselves directly to that stricken area, even outside of our borders. But obviously, inside our community, people have been most generous as well, but that was such a significant visit from a different country's secretary of state to our country, just showed the amount of caring that our community has, and often, without even asking, folks step up. So, a lesson that we've learned through this is when we serve others, we take some ownership and we strengthen ourselves, and there's probably no one that gives to needy ventures or to those in need that just don't feel terrific themselves about what they've done. So, caring is a significant report for this year. Our community, even though it's suffered, has been caring for others and continues to care for one another tremendously, so I'm very proud of our community. On to town finances. Of course, belt tightening is a popular term, and cost savings and innovations have been abounding throughout Town Hall, thanks to our town manager and the staff. They have been finding ways to be innovative in delivering services, maintaining the level of service and delivering that service at a considerable less expense. Revenues have been down. Our Town Council will continue to balance the budget, so our spending has been reduced as well. We were meeting this challenge. It is a significant challenge, but every day, I am more confident that we will face this, continue to face it successfully. The team has also been, on top of stimulus funding opportunities, of course, the Stimulus Act, the American Recovery Act, has influx a large amount of money largely towards capital projects, not operational projects, and we've, I believe, received over $3 million of that to date, and continue to look for getting Fountain Hills fair share. And we'll apply those dollars to projects that the community will be proud of what we've contributed precious federal dollars towards, largely roads. We've also been very fortunate in leveraging grants from regional organizations, largely the Maricopa Association of Governments, or MAG. Again, millions of dollars coming towards Shea Boulevard, Shea Boulevard and Saworo Boulevard intersections, as well as Shea and Fountain Hills Boulevard and that entire area. If you've driven on the westbound lanes of Shea Boulevard, you've noticed some needed improvements, and fortunately, our staff and council has been diligent in going after grants, and most of the MAG grants are a 70/30 match, where we have 30% of the funding and we're matched with the 70% of the grants, so we're very fortunate to get our fair share of those. Also, we've taken a different approach to budgeting. Budgeting for outcomes is how we are going about budgeting this year, and it goes right in line with our program budgeting that we started the year prior, thanks to a new software program. So, it really helps us to understand what things cost. It applies not just the hard costs, but the soft costs to deliver services, so that we can understand what type of fees perhaps need to be charged, or do we see value in this program now that we understand what the actual cost is. It helps council make some, a lot more knowledgeable decisions, particularly as we enter this budget season. And the fact is, there'll be needs this year due to reduced revenues coming into the town. There'll be needs that we won't fill, probably for the first time in some time, so that helps us a great deal, and appreciate staff working to have us prepared for our budget season. And of course, as we move forward, as we have in the past, we'll continue a conservative approach to our budgeting. I think Fountain Hills is one of the first communities that has made cuts in their budgets and made cuts in advance of need and expectation of the downturn in the economy. We started several years ago in reducing our budget, and of course, as things have progressed and have gotten more difficult, we've made further cuts midstream. And so, we have done our belt tightening, which has been necessary. We also rely on many people in our community. Here is a photograph from our 20th anniversary celebration. These are, all of the former mayors came together to celebrate our 20th year as a municipality. Of course, Fountain Hills has been here for about 40 years, but as a municipality for 20. Many other former council members and current council members are there as well. It was a tremendous celebration, but the illustration here is to let you know that it's not just seven of us up here as council and our town manager. Our town is getting through the difficulties that we are facing because of all the help that we are receiving, not just from prior electeds, but from numerous volunteers that share their tremendous talents with our community, directly saving dollars where they can, but also helping us to make the best decisions possible, furnishing us with information. Included in that are former mayors, our former council members, are always encouraged to stay in contact and to dialogue and to help us out, and it was a great opportunity for us all to get together to celebrate the 20 years, and I thought that was just a fun picture to share if you weren't for mayor with it. What have we done? Well, I think what stands out this last year is the collaborative approach we took in working with our business community in the Chamber of Commerce and undergoing the downtown vision exercise. When the economy is slow, some of the best planners in the world that happen to live in the valley, Swaback Partners, are available to work with us. So, at a time when you don't have dollars to spend, it's a good time to plan. Do you want to be prepared for the future? We do. We had opportunity, I think largely through a relationship that Jeremy Hall from MCO had with Swaback introduced the opportunity for us to work with them. The Chamber of Commerce contracted with them, the town jumped right on board to take the second half on, and we worked through, throughout the entire process together with a very professional organization, Swaback Partners, of which one of their main principals lives here in Fountain Hills, so that helped as well. A great process, many of you were involved in, and we now have a tremendous plan that we've adopted, and you'll be voting on in November in your general plan as well. So, we're moving forward with this. Of course, the capital dollars are not quite there yet for people to develop such a project, but they will be soon. And we've already had, through our Economic Development Administrator, some tremendous conversations with developers that think that this is quite an exciting opportunity. So, more things to come. As we mentioned, when we went through it, expectations are not, this is not going to happen overnight. There's more information on this on the Chamber's website and also on the Town website, so I encourage you to become for mayor with that. And that's Vern Swaback on the left. He's an icon throughout the world in planning, so it was a great opportunity to work with a great firm. As I mentioned, volunteers in our community are really our backbone, and the organizations that most of them are a part of, are a huge part of our community. I want to just highlight a few. There's just thousands you could go through, but we now have over 600 town volunteers serving us. I think it's over 45% growth year over year, so we've continued to grow our volunteer program, and our coordinator, Heather Ware, most of you know, does a great job getting people plugged in. The Give a Lift program I wanted to highlight, Give a Lift is a group of volunteers, probably some in the audience here participate in that, and the county, due to their financial challenges, had to cancel their transportation program that helped a lot of folks that couldn't get around, get around. And so, we were scrambling, and Heather and the volunteers came up with a Give a Lift program. So, our staff worked with the volunteers to sketch out a program, and that, those folks picked up and ran with it. Today, the town hardly is involved as a coordination of that. The volunteers are in direct contact with the people that need lifts, have formed friendships, have enriched each other's lives, and have served those folks in getting around our community and around the region, over to Mayo Clinic, maybe over to Scottsdale to see a doctor, or just to lunch with someone that they may not have known in the past. So, just a great example of our volunteers stepping up in our community, very proud. Kids Help Kids, I don't know if many of you have heard or read about this group of powerhouses. These are six, seven, and eight-year-olds, and from right here in the community. A couple of them are here tonight. Do you guys want to stand up? Kids Help Kids. That's just a screenshot of them over at Canax doing an interview on the radio, and I'm just real proud of these guys. Max Hadso, one of the boys there, had a passion for the homeless kids in the valley and stepped up and asked some friends to help. They raised over $1,000, delivered a couple truckloads of clothes down to Phoenix, just an example of what kids are doing in our community. Thanks, you guys. Of course, I got to brag about our Mayor's Youth Council, because that's the best organization in the world. Our kids continue to volunteer and impress me on a daily basis there at the high school. As I mentioned, just so many other groups in our community serving us. Some that I'm going to mention that I didn't put on the PowerPoint, you may have read about more of, is the Victoria Cattibiano with Fountain Hills Cares, a group of volunteers that provide service to those that have been traumatically affected by an accident or incidents in their lives, and that group continues to provide service and be there for those with needs that perhaps municipal resource can't fill all the gaps. But those folks are aware of all the services available to those in trauma. Maybe they've lost a loved one or distraught, or have a drug issue. Fountain Hills Cares gets folks plugged into the resources that there are out there in our community and outside of our community. They work with the Fountain Hills Rural Metro Fire Department, and also our Maricopa County Sheriff's Office here in Fountain Hills, and support our residents when they are in great need. Additionally, I wanted to mention, there's so many great things that happen in our town that you may not even hear about, but an example at the high school, I was a part of their fall sports awards banquet, and the referees showed up and awarded our high school students there in the football team for Fountain Hills High School with the sportsmanship award that they give out every year. It's the first time they've awarded the same team twice in one year, or in year over year, so our kids are tremendous sportsmanship. They demonstrate sportsmanship out there even as they're pounding on the competitor. And in fact, I think what may have spurred this on was a letter that I had seen from an opposing team that was slaughtered the night before, but our kids were so kind as they, as they performed. They were helping the other teams up. They were just great sports, so I think that contributed to them being recognized. Another thing you may not have heard about, Katie Visco, 23-year-old, just came through our town. She's the youngest female to run across America, and she met up with one of our residents, Jerry Trailer, who many of you may know. Jerry suffers from cerebral palsy and is a professional speaker, and he also ran across America, but on crutches. He is a great Fountain Hills resident, and he met up with Katie to encourage her in her 3,132-mile run, and her mission is to encourage people, particularly young girls, to follow their dreams and their passions. And she came through Fountain Hills. I wanted to mention things that you probably may not even have heard about in our great town, that I just happen to be fortunate enough to stumble onto because of who I am, thankfully. We encourage, we continue to focus on doing small-town events. The people in Fountain Hills love small-town events. Fountain Hills, the town municipality doesn't do a lot of small-town events, but we try to encourage others to participate and to hold small-town events here in our community. Of course, Oktoberfest there with me with my silly beer hat, there with former Mayor Sharon Morgan there, and just an overview of some of the festivities that occurred during Oktoberfest as just one example. Many events, some of them raising funds for other organizations in our town while we have fun and support and enjoy our friendship and fellowship with one another down at Fountain Park and various different parts of town. So, the Town Council will continue to support small-town events. We'll be looking for more people to partner with, or we'll at least be looking to get out of the way so others can continue to have these small-town events that our community cherishes. I've got to mention our strategic plan. The Strategic Planning Advisory Commission is a tremendous group of individuals here in Fountain Hills that are keeping our strategic plan alive, and the strategic plan, for those not aware, is our pulse on the citizens of Fountain Hills. What do you value? It helps to, that report that's put together now in its fifth year, being revised, helps the councils understand what we should be focused on for our outcomes as we do our budgeting. They share their talents, and they're very generous. Many of these folks are skilled in this area and do this for a living, but for Fountain Hills, they do it gratis because of their love for the community, and they put in hundreds of hours, and they've had hundreds, if not thousands, of conversations with the community in order to update the strategic plan that they are in the final stages of the community engagement. They've gone, they've taken a path to go where the community is. They even went to the Boys and Girls Clubs, and the Boys and Girls Clubs cooperated in helping to watch children while the parents participated in the strategic plan update. So, they've been out, you've probably seen them, many of you have probably talked to them. They will keep a pulse on our residents and our businesses to advise council of what the community feels is important. The presentations you may have seen are tremendous, and the raw data is overwhelming, so they've also had a lot of feedback from kids directly as well, so. We will continue to work on our partnerships, as we feel that those that serve the community closest are those best to serve. Many of these organizations you see here are serving people directly and do it very efficiently, and where we will, where we can, we will continue to partner with these organizations and more, and individuals themselves also with a passion to serve our community or introduce an idea that may have value to our community. We will continue to work on partnerships, not just in delivering services, but also in economic development. We will be open to public-private partnerships as we move forward, because we need to become more innovative and take advantage of opportunities to leverage other people's strengths as we manage our limited resources here in Fountain Hills. Just a couple of accomplishments I wanted to go over, of course, belt tightening, cost-saving innovations. We'll continue. That resulted this last year in even a modest surplus in our budget this last year. We're not expecting a surplus this year, but we'll always strive for that, as the economy and the revenues continue to decline coming into the town, it's going to be more difficult, obviously. We've had awards and excellence in our budget presentation and financial reporting, something to celebrate. We've maintained a very high bond rating from Moody's. That helps us when we do need money to borrow at a low rate. It helped us several years ago to refinance our bonds and to save precious dollars in doing so. We're doing so. Currently, as far as the town goes, we are healthy. We have maintained our fund balances and currently have over $22 million in fund balances. Today, we will maintain our general fund reserve balance at the recommended amount of $6.5 million. It's actually probably a little higher than recommended given our current budget's been declining, but we will look to maintain our general fund balances. And we have more recently adopted a rainy day fund, which we have now funded as well. Fountain Hills, some bragging rights, over 2009, received another award as we have had other awards in the past. Many of you were introduced to Fountain Hills through Parenting Magazine, which about 15, 20 years ago, recognized Fountain Hills as one of the best places to raise a family. Phoenix Magazine followed suit several years ago and named Fountain Hills the best place to live in the valley. And then just this last year, Business Week named Fountain Hills the best affordable suburb in Arizona. So Fountain Hills may not have been considered affordable several years ago when the home prices were at their peak, but we have now qualified for affordable, but we are the best affordable. And I think everybody here would agree. With limited resources, I think our staff has done a great job and the community has stepped up to assist. One example is Fountain Park. That park has undergone a great deal of improvement, a great deal of investment, and is looking tremendous. It is our centerpiece. It is where we have most of our events. It is a very special amenity we have in our community that was built in the middle of a desert with somebody had a dream, which must have been crazy at the time. But our Fountain Park is looking tremendous. And I think that's just an example of the hard work that's done by our staff and our community assisting in helping us understand where we can improve and where we can be innovative. So as I mentioned, what's key to this last year and it's clear going forward, as the economy continues to be difficult, we need to help one another out. And we need, I want to invite everyone watching, everyone listening, to feel as if they are invited to participate in our community. Fountain Hills has unique values. We have unique needs and we have those that are suffering as well, even in our fine town. So there are opportunities for us to all serve one another. And as I mentioned earlier, in what I chaired with the Arizona Republic, it's 2009's most significant item is the economy. And I ask that if you join in, everyone is certainly invited and that when we serve others, we take some ownership and we strengthen ourselves. And your involvement, direct involvement, makes Fountain Hills a better place to call home. And every ounce of effort that you give to Fountain Hills, I feel you'll get back and you're going to add to the value that others, our children, those that are elderly in need across the board, will be thankful. And you will feel terrific for your involvement in our community. And I wanted to thank the council, the town staff, and most importantly, the citizens of Fountain Hills, the organizations that we partner with and that we work with on a daily basis for their ongoing support and their assistance and working together to move Fountain Hills forward as best we can. We have a great thing going. We are fortunate, will continue to be fortunate. And this town council, I'm very confident, will continue to be focused on what's important and what's valued in Fountain Hills. And of course, we're always available. Anytime you go to the town website or anywhere you go to look for me, you can always get ahold of me. And I welcome your calls and of course, I invite you to participate in being part of the solution that we call Fountain Hills. And thank you very much for allowing me to give you our state of the town here at our town chamber. And now we'll move on with our council meeting, which will be even more brief. So thank you. And thank you for coming, kids. Thanks for being here. You guys inspire us at six, seven, and eight-years-old. Just outstanding. As I mentioned, feel free to stay. We will be wrapping this up. We're going to also be recognizing some other great people here in our community, no surprise. And that's what we'll move on to now is a presentation of Citizens Life Saving Awards by myself in recognition of life-saving actions performed January 22, 2010, in our very own Fountain Hills Community Theater. And let me first read a little script that I was helped with from Randy Roberts here in our fire department and Chief Legreca. In recognition of life-saving actions performed January 22, 2010, at the Fountain Hills Community Theater, these three citizens reacted quickly to recognize that a patron had gone into cardiac arrest. They secured an automatic external defibrillator that is part of the town's publicly accessible defibrillator program. Proper use of the AED as well as the appropriate use of CPR saved this gentleman's life. Their actions, along with the availability of the AED, resulted in the survival of the citizen. In addition, the town would like to recognize Mr. Phil Gaziano for his involvement and dedication in creating the PAD program in Fountain Hills. On behalf of the Town of Fountain Hills and the Fountain Hills Rural Metro Fire Department, I would like to present these three citizens with Citizens Life Saving Awards. So if you would please, I'll read names and I'll meet you down front. Linda Farrington, if you're here. Is Linda here? No, not Linda. Patty, you're here.
I'm not here because she's at the show, the show.
All right. I see you, Patty. Come on forward, Patty. And Dr. William Mantle, if you're here, please come forward. And Chief Legreca, come on forward if you're here. Yeah, we are. Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
And we have a gentleman that's helped us with the equipment, I understand. Well, I'll give you a moment right when I'm done here. Would you give this to Linda? All right. Here's a certificate for Linda Farrington. And it's yours with an S. Is that correct? All right, Patty, thank you very much. I'm sure there's someone out there thanking you even more than myself. Dr. Mantle, thank you very much. Outstanding. And I understand, I also understand that it was just prior to this occurring that you reacquainted yourself with the AED being available. And did you want to say anything?
Well, I did want to say something. I want to say on behalf of the theater that we really want to thank Phil and the Civic Association because honestly, I think we all know that if we had not had the AED, that Ed would not be here right now. And that's an absolute certainty. And of course, I want to thank Dr. Mantle and then our paramedics who, not only their actions that evening, but also for training us. So very thankful for that.
Very good. And Phil and Carol Gaziano, thank you very much. Chief Legreca, thanks for thinking and recognizing great citizens and outstanding heroic efforts to serve our community in most desperate need individually. Sir, Jay Schlom, mayor here. You provided the equipment with us.
My name's John Rittenberg with Cardiac Science. I also want to thank Phil Gaziano for his passion and enthusiasm in getting the AEDs out in conjunction with the fire department and Steve Boyer back there. Cardiac Science is a global leader in advanced defibrillation technology and we work with municipalities and counties and states in developing public access defibrillation programs. And without having an AED, the chances of survival are less than 5%. By having an AED present like we have in the town, the chances of survival go way up, as high as 60 to 90% depending on access to the defibrillator. So at Cardiac Science, we like to recognize the people who are part of the save and giving a life-saving award. So like to do that today. Patty, this is a life-saving certificate to you.
That's way as nice as ours.
Okay, all right. And Dr. Mantle, this is for you.
Thank you. And we have one for Linda Farrington.
Well, that's terrific. And thank you very much for recognizing that. And I think we now have. Thank you, guys. I think we'd like to get a picture of Bob from Bob here, if you would. Thank you. Yes, they have so many awards. I think, how many, chief, do we have? 23 or so throughout our community and 25? All right, thanks, Steve. Thank you for maintaining them. Thanks for maintaining them and for allowing them to be utilized in our community.
Thanks to the council to support us three years ago when we purchased these.
Thanks again, Phil. Thank you very much for that. Outstanding. Now we'll move on to presentation by the Recreation Division on upcoming special events, coordinated or co-sponsored by the Town of Fountain Hills in the months of March and April coming up. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you, mayor, council members. I think probably now is a good opportunity to remind people that Parks and Recreation in coordination with the fire department offers CPR and AED courses once a month. So if anybody wants to sign up for those every, every first Saturday or second Saturday of the month.
Very good.
But tonight, we're here to talk about special events that are happening during the months of March and April. Jay, you're going to have to click for me if you don't. I'm just kidding. One of the first ones we have coming up that was mentioned earlier is the Memorial Championship presented by Discraft at Fountain Park. It's actually kicking off on March 2 with a demonstration, an expo, and a concert in the park that evening. So we'll have 400-plus disc golfers converge on Fountain Park for four days of competition in both amateur and professional divisions. So this is probably the big disc golf event that happens at Fountain Park every year. Some of the other ones are smaller, but this has really turned into a kind of a big deal for our town. So it's pretty exciting to have that here. And the town is the sponsor of the tournament, providing the park at no charge. Along with that, though, throughout the year, the Disc Golf Club helps us with maintenance of the baskets and the course and things like that. So we do have a nice partnership with them to maintain that course. So that will be coming up, like I said, March 2 through the 6. Now he's just messing with me.
A little bit.
Sundays in March, the concerts in the park are back at the amphitheater, 2:30 to 4:00 PM. Good variety of bands participating again this year. We've got, March 7 is back at The Ranch, a country group. March 4 is Bree Dower, an Irish band, following our St. Patrick's Day event the day before. March 21 is Mosaic March, a Hispanic music group. And March 28 is Igor's Jazz Cowboys, which is jazz and they've been out here several times in the past, very popular. March 13 at Fountain Park, the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce is coordinating this year's event for their St. Patrick's Day celebration. It's on the agenda for later this evening, consisting of music, kids activities, food, beverages, and the world's tallest green fountain at noon at 5:00 PM. The town's co-sponsoring this event, providing the park at no charge, dying the fountain green twice, and providing street closures and staff support for the event. So that is one of the signature events for our town and I think it should be a good time. And it should be noted, too, that also on March 17, as is tradition, it still will be green at noon. So we've kept that going in conjunction with this event. March 27, another event that's been going on for quite some time, the Extravaganza over at Golden Eagle Park. Last year, we expanded this event to include inflatable bouncers, the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast, Hoppy Bunny, and we have Clucky the Chicken participating this year. So you can never have enough mascots. And our rain date, which hopefully it won't happen, we've been getting quite a bit of rain this year, but is the following Saturday, just in case. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Jogo and the Goyana team for their ongoing support of this event. I think they've been helping sponsor this since 2002. April 9, we are going with a classic movie night at Fountain Park. We're doing a double feature, which we've never done before, and we're doing something to appeal to our adult and older residents, An Affair to Remember, a classic with Cary Grant, and Sleepless in Seattle immediately following that at 9:00 PM. So that's going to be something a little different and we'll see how that goes, but it should be a lot of fun. And then the kids will be excited about Cloudy with a Chance of Meatballs the very next night. As always, I want to thank Natalie Varela for her ongoing support of the movies in the park. She brought this to us, I want to say, four or five years ago and it's been going strong ever since then with all the movies being fully sponsored by local businesses and we certainly appreciate that. The next day, it's a very busy weekend, the 9th through the 11th, Paws Around the Fountain Adopt-a-thon, coordinated by ADOG in conjunction with PAC 911. Features 30-plus animal rescue groups, demonstrations, and entertainment, and we are helping out with that just by providing the park and a little bit of staff support. That's a great event. I think they adopted 100-plus dogs, animals, last year. So hopefully, a lot of animals will find good homes again this year. And just wanted to reiterate that these events, small-town events, go along with the town's strategic plan and our annual goals. And we are continuing to try and strengthen our small-town identity and partner whenever possible to keep these things going. So thank you to the council for your support and invite everybody to come out and help spread eggs on the Extravaganza or anything else that you want to help out with. We enjoy having everybody there. So thank you very much. And if anybody has any questions, be happy to answer them.
How many eggs are put out on Extravaganza?
We actually had to up it a little bit. We're at 15,000 plastic stuffed eggs.
That takes several hours to spread with the help of the Mayor's Youth Council.
Correct. And how much time to pick them up? I believe under 90 seconds last year, so.
The quickest 90 seconds in sports.
It is. If anybody hasn't been out there to see that, it is truly a spectacle. So it's very exciting and it's a good time for all the kids. It's been a lot of fun and we do get support from the fire department at that one, too. They bring out the fire engines and things for the kids to climb all over. So but that's the end of my presentation. So thank you very much.
Any other questions for Brian on that presentation? Councilman Legreca.
Thanks, Brian, for your presentation. Just a quick question for you. This disc golf tournament seems to be growing every year. I was just wondering if Parks and Rec or folks that are sponsoring this activity have any processes in place for, you know, managing their golf with respect to people that are using the park? Sometimes they kind of run into each other and we have complaints or people aren't aware of what's occurring.
Mayor Schlom, Councilman Legreca, this past tournament that we just had had over 30 volunteers helping out to kind of be as, act as course monitors. And we recognize that it's a park first and foremost and that these events kind of happen around it. We've been working very hard to make sure that the public's aware of what's going on and that everybody's been, you know, pretty safe as they walk through the park. So it's a little bit of an awareness-type thing, too. And so far, I think it went pretty well back at the end of January and we're hoping that this one goes just as well. And I know they have volunteers and ambassadors, as they're calling them, to help out with that, so.
Excellent. So that will be in place this time.
Yes. So we're definitely working on that because it has grown and we do need to make sure everybody's safe and that everybody knows what's going on.
Thank you, Blair. And Brian. All right, thank you very much, Brian.
Good. Thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Cantino, sorry.
Sorry.
Brian, I want to thank you for putting all this together and putting all the dates on there. I think the one thing that I really enjoy is the ADOG and the PAC 911. I think it brings a big awareness to us about what goes on with our animals and how we should adopt them. And I think that that's a great program and I thank you for starting it.
Well, actually, it was ADOG's program and we want to thank them. We just kind of support as needed, but ADOG and PAC 911 have done a great job and we think it's a good event to help support. So thank you.
Thanks again, Brian.
You're welcome.
All right, move on to call to the public. We have a speaker card.
Yes, Mayor Dwayne Johnson.
All right. Mr. Johnson, please come on forward to the microphone. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilman. This is just further about the speed on Fountain Hills Boulevard. I went from Emerald to, what's the first?
King Street?
No, the other one. King Street to the first set of four-way stops.
Inca.
Inca, yes. Inca, 60 signatures. Nobody thought it was a bad idea. If we put the speed to 35 all the way along, then there's no confusion. The way to, you put out the strips that slowed them down, I think. But now they're back at it again. And the four-way stop at Inca, it splits the two lanes. If you put an arrow there, that the right-hand lane would be a right turn only. It would prevent the race going down the other side because they have to converge back into a single lane again, which I understand the four-way stop is probably put there to slow traffic down. And if you slowed the traffic down to 35 all the way along, I think that would work if it was enforced. Most people don't think it would be enforced if it did go to 35. But that's all I have to say. You counted the street or the cars and I don't know what happened there.
My know-staff, staff's met with you and I think they're still following up on you.
Yeah. But I got, like I said, 60 signatures in an afternoon and I could get a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else, Beth?
No.
All right, thank you. Now move on to the consent agenda. I look for a motion to approve as listed.
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Schlum?
Aye.
Councilmember Legre?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cantino?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Ashamo?
Aye.
Mayor 70?
Thank you very much. And if you did not look at the consent agenda out there in public, a lot more parties were just approved. So another good thing here. And our commissioners, yeah, welcome aboard as well. Thank you. Move on to the regular agenda. And as I mentioned, it is brief. Council discussion direction to Town Manager Julie. I don't think we had anything here tonight come up. Summary council requests, reports on recent activities. Anything you wish to report on, Julie?
Thank you, mayor. No, only that the staff and the Executive Budget Committee continue to work on the fiscal year 11 budget with the goal of presenting it to the town council and the public in the first week in April.
Thank you very much. Look now for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.